The City of Waukegan is replacing about 20,000 water meters with a new automated meter, which provide for an accurate, timely, and reliable reading without having to gain access to customers' properties. The new meters, which will be replaced at no cost to the customers, will be able to identify high water usage and potential leaks. In addition, customers will be able to access their water usage and account information conveniently online. The first thing you need to do is schedule an appointment with Professional Meters, Inc., to have your old meter replaced with a new automated meter reader, AMR for short. Look for a postcard in the mail with the call information or call (866) 270-9629. PMI will arrive at your scheduled time to install your meter. They will arrive on a truck or a van with a PMI logo, the PMI installer will have on a shirt or a jacket with a PMI logo, and will carry a PMI ID badge. Installers will also wear booties over their work boots to ensure they do not carry dirt, mud, or water into your home or business. The installation process should take less than 30 minutes. The installer will take a photo of the old meter to obtain a record of your final meter reading and the condition of the pipes and fittings. The next step is to turn off your shuttle valves located on your water meter line near the meter. Remove the old meter and install the new AMR meter. The transmitter, which transmits your water usage data to the city, will be placed on a convenient location near the meter. The installer will take a photo of the new meter once it's installed. And that's it. The PMI installer will make sure everything is cleaned up, collect his tools, and head on to the next installation. You may receive a follow-up visit from a PMI manager to ensure your satisfaction with the installation and to make a quality control check of the meter installation. For more information about the Automated Meter Reading Installation Program, please visit If you have any questions regarding the meter installation, contact PMI at (866) 270-9629 or the City of Waukegan City Collector at (847) 599-2997.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Waukegan City Council Meeting of September 6, 2016. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Velco.
Present.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Ziegler.
Present.
Alderman Moiseo.
President.
Please rise for the invocation and pledge. Bishop Coburn.
Father, we thank you again for another city council meeting. We thank you for all your blessings. When we look around and see how you blessed Waukegan, we thank you for our mayor, for this council, all the department heads, for our police department, for our five departments, each one of our citizens, bless them. Remember those people in Louisiana that are going through trials and tests? Bless us with love and one another, respect. In the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Amen. I'm glad to be the president of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bishop. Mayor's comments. I'd like to present some people to you that made SCOOP work as well as it did. David, would you please come forward? David Motley. We're going to recognize the original scoopers and the volunteers that worked so diligently to make SCOOP work this year. So, David.
Thank you so much. Hello, good evening. I wanted to take this opportunity to recognize the countless number of volunteers and participants that helped make SCOOP success this year. As all of you know, volunteerism is very important to not only this community but also to our community partners. So, more than 40 volunteers helped put on the event, which was on July 9th and 10th this year. And most of them assisted with at least seven hours of time. And to quantify this, the national average of volunteer hour is $23.56. And using this formula to calculate an estimated impact for all of their time and talent, we can come up with a total of more than $6,000 of equivalent cash value for their expertise and volunteerism. So, I wanted to bring them up after I recognized the original scoopers. And we'll ask each of the volunteers here tonight to just come up and introduce themselves to you so you can put a name to a face. I also wanted to take this quick moment to recognize all of the sponsors that also helped make it happen. That's also a critical part of this equation, and those include the Mishifts Car Club, AAA Tent Masters, the Waukegan Park District, Jackson Auto Sales, Classic Toyota, Scion, and Kia, Carriage Autobody, Visual Pack Companies, Lake County Auto Sales, Trifinity Distributors, American Outfitters, the Waukegan Chamber of Commerce, the Waukegan Main Street, Wags, Grease Monkey, By the Yard, the Greentown Tavern, Meachewakana Ice Cream Store, Belvedere Autobody, Merlin Muffler, O'Reilly Auto Parts, Ron's Storage, Lee's Auto Parts, Trans Solutions, Lake County Hose, Waukegan Tire, Kloss Tire and Auto, Strang Automotive, Ace Radiator, Herman Brothers, Glass City, Tread Rock Tire, JR Wrecker Services, Deluxe Plaza Car Wash, Great Lakes Credit Union, Casey's Autobody, Frame Up Wheel Works, and also the food vendors that are also sponsors as well, including Mike's Pizza, Pampanga Express, Trace Flores Funnel Cakes, East Coast Concessions, Supermuncaro Gonzalez, Grub and Go, Brother Willie's Snow Cones. With that being said, I also wanted to give special recognition to NRG for being our entertainment sponsor. They gave $10,000 to spend on our entertainment this year. And a special recognition to WXLC 102.3, Waukegan's FM radio station. They gave us a total promotional cash value product for advertising of $15,000 to advertise the event. So, all together with the volunteers and the sponsors, and certainly the foresight from the city council and the administration, it made this event a success. So, that's pretty significant. But let me introduce you to all the people that helped make it happen. They include, from the original scoopers, Jerry Cook. Please come up. We have Dick Breen. Bob Paddock is not able to join us. What do you call him? What do you call Bob? What's your pet?
Paddock?
Yeah.
You mean the fat rat?
The fat rat is what he's known as. He's not here today.
He's up north. He just had a leg.
And also, I wanted to give a tip of the old fedora and recognize Ron Selesnik, who single-handedly, Ron single-handedly raised more than $8,000 himself to help contribute to this event. So, he's an amazing and energetic guy, and without his assistance, again, we would not be sitting here celebrating a success. All right? Why don't you guys stand up front? And I also wanted to bring up two important people to me. If I am Batman, she is my Robin, and that is Jane Ferry. And coincidentally, I see that Tracy Adams is in the audience. Can you come up, Tracy? Tracy also is one of those volunteers, but she went above and beyond doing whatever it took. These two ladies directed traffic, they managed the crowd, they drove the car. They did whatever it took to get the job done, and I really appreciate that because it was necessary. So, to that end, I wanted to bring up each of the volunteers for the event. If you could stand up and make your way over here and line up and just introduce yourselves to the city council, please, and to the audience as well.
Bob Walser.
Chris Skowalski.
Rich Thompson.
Sean Stouts.
So, up until this moment, they did it all for the love of cars. It had nothing to do with the tacos we gave them or the awesome t-shirts. But this recognition is important. We know that without this event, specifically the volunteers, it would not happen as efficiently and as well as it did. And I know, looking at the crowd here, they not only helped manage the car show and the check-in process, but many of them also directed traffic and helped pedestrians go back and forth through the parade of cars. So, I wanted to bring them here tonight for special recognition and that applause. So, one more time, thank you. And I suppose if there are any questions from the dais, I'll be happy to entertain them. Otherwise, I'll release them to the winds and go do what they need to do.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I haven't had an accounting yet from the finance department. We budgeted $50,000 for this event. I myself collected over $30,000. So, if we didn't, if it wasn't free to the citizens of the city, and the taxpayers shouldn't have to pay a whole lot of anything. So, this is how things work here with volunteerism, with people like the original scoopers and the volunteers. That being said, we had another event last weekend. David, are you done?
I was going to say that Sean just reminded me that I had my date incorrect. It's the 8th and 9th. Certainly, I talk really fast sometimes, and I think ahead of myself, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. And by the way, that's the guy that got it all started and got it done. So, let's give him a hand, too. That being said, we had another event that came back to Waukegan after a 30-year absence. That was Afro Fest. Angel Kyle asked me if he could come tonight and make a presentation. So, Angel, step to the mic, please.
The original Afro Fest. Thank you, Mayor. To the mayor and to the city council, and of course, to the citizens of the community. It certainly is good to be here on tonight. I want to say first and foremost, it is refreshing to see that the work that we have done with the Citizens for Progress has finally been realized and is finally getting the recognition that it deserves. We have made some historical headway here in the city of Waukegan. Our successes have been insurmountable, and we see now that even the body cameras, I know when we came onboard, the mayor and the council were already working on body cameras, but now the body cameras have become a national, if not international, acclaim. So, with that, and of course, the hiring of Rick Harris as the diversity officer.
Afro Fest.
And so, we appreciate that. Thank you. Afro Fest, thank you so much. I want to first and foremost thank the mayor and David Motley, as well as George Torres. The mayor went above and beyond the call of duty when he had asked me to bring Afro Fest back to the city where it all started. My first response was that, "Mayor, you know that it's going to be a little more expensive because the lakefront, Waukegan lakefront, is much larger and a lot more to be accommodated." But the mayor went above and beyond to accommodate us, and I want to thank him for his accommodations as well as his provisions, and first and foremost, for the resources. The mayor helped us raise money to put on Afro Fest, and it would not have been the success that it was if it were not for the resources that you have raised. So, we certainly want to thank you for that. And also, Dave and George and even Jane, they were phenomenal. They helped us with equipment, helped us pick up equipment, helped us set up equipment. We got a little rain this year. It wasn't quite as well attended as previous years because of the rain, but all of us, myself, Dave, George, and Jane, we literally stood out in the rain having a meeting to strategize. What are we going to do if it continues to rain, and what are we going to do if and when it stops? So, I want to thank them personally for that also. I've been doing Afro Fest for 31 years now. I took this over from the previous First Ward Alderman, of course, the Robert Evans. And since then, I have, he passed me the torch to do that, and we have had a ball in doing it. We had over 33 bands, groups, entertainers. We had fashion shows. We had poetry as well, and we gave away book bags to the young people as well. We gave away over 150 book bags. Some of them were even leather book bags. Oh, and the clerk, clerk was there as well as the mayor. And I want to thank the Alderman who came as well. Alderman Taylor came. Alderman May was there. Alderman Newsome was there, the clerk, of course, the mayor was there, and Alderman Cunningham as well. So, I want to thank all of you for, oh, yes, I'm sorry. And I want to thank Alderman.
Villalobos.
Yeah, that's what I said. I want to thank him. Thank you. Thank you for coming, Alderman.
I know.
I know. I saw you. I remember. Thank you for coming as well. So, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to approve the regular minutes of August 15, 2016. Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Newsome. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next, a resolution, proclamation, presentation, appointments, Waukegan Main Street.
Good evening, Mayor Motley, council members, and audience. Last month, I celebrated my first anniversary as executive director of Waukegan Main Street. I would like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members, the various organizations involved in the downtown revitalization efforts, our volunteers and community for your support. Our work must continue. We do, we must do our best to succeed. We've heard the concerns and issues. Main Street is developing transformational strategies to address these problems. From now to the end of the year, I will share our vision to revitalize downtown Waukegan and the lakefront.
There are no committee reports. I entertain a motion to go to executive session to discuss matters of personnel. I'll make that motion. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Ziegler. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
One nay. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go into executive session to discuss matters of personnel, and we'll be back as briefly as we possibly can. Time is 8 o'clock. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk, coming into regular session.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Velco.
Present.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Ziegler.
Present.
Alderman Moiseo. Alderman Villalobos.
Present.
There is no old business. There are no reports of occupation. New business, item A, approval of payroll dated August 19, 2016, in the amount of Payroll dated September 2, 2016, in the amount of $1,475,768.72. And reimbursement expense dated August 19, 2016, in the amount of $1,102. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Item B, approval of bills dated September 5, 2016, in the amount of $2,303,218.82. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Approval of raffle sale applications for Sunset Fellowship Bowling League and Waukegan Booster Club. Motion by Alderman Ziegler, second by Alderman Tempest. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item D, motion to authorize a proper city official to execute a land use permit allowing beast grooming on IDNR property at North Point Marina as required pursuant to the grant agreement by and between the state of Illinois, Department of Natural Resources, and the city of Waukegan entitled U.S. Environmental Protection Agency Beach Sweeper Waukegan and Winter Harbor authorized by the city council in the February 1, 2016 meeting. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Villalobos. What this is, when we got a grant for the sweeper, for the sift sander for the beach, as part of the agreement to get that piece of equipment, we incorporated the use of this machine in Winter Harbor. What we will do is take this machine to Winter Harbor. They will pay us an agreed amount of money for our time and services to clean their beach. And this was part of the grant agreement. Are there any questions on this?
Yes, sir. Your honor, I guess the question I would have from a liability standpoint, Steve, do we have a whole harmless agreement any event that this machine damaged this property or that property?
We had discussed that with IDNR when we put this together. When you do a contract with IDNR, each party, including the state and Waukegan, is responsible for our own liability. We had to present to them a certificate of insurance, naming them as insured on our insurance policy. We're only responsible for our acts and not their acts.
Well, the reason I'm asking, because from my understanding, our personnel will be operating this machine.
Correct.
So, if we operating this machine, and because we don't know the terrain as we know our own, we hit, let's say, a water line or a gas line, that means we're liable for helping them out. Is that, is that how this is going to work?
We're responsible for the work we perform on the beach in Winter Harbor. That's correct, sir.
Any other question? If not, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Question.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Is the grant paying for the city employee, then, their time?
No, they're going to reimburse the city for all of our time, and they're going to actually rent the machine and pay for our employees' time.
Okay.
That's, we're paying zero on this end. In order to get this grant, they asked us to incorporate Winter Harbor because they have the same issues on their beach. So, it helped us get the grant application passed, and that's why we incorporated Winter Harbor.
Now, can we get insurance on this so that we are covered?
Well, we have insurance. The city is covered for the liability issue.
Steve, question for you. Is it possible that they have a person who can operate this machine on their land?
No, because the way the grant was written is, the agreement was with IDNR, is that because they needed, IDNR needed work done at that location as well as Waukegan.
Right.
The grant currently sets out that work has to be done at VOST. We were given the opportunity to purchase the sweeper and purchase the tractor to put the equipment together to utilize it. But we also agreed at the point in time that we would do work for Winter Harbor, for actually for IDNR at the Winter Harbor site. The employees and the equipment and the insurance is the same coverage as if we were working on the beach in Waukegan. Because we're offsite, it makes no difference whatsoever.
And I understand that. I just, I'm just thinking, because we don't know their terrain up there, certain things or lines are hidden, things that we know ours, I don't know about, that's why I was asking if they had someone who can operate that machine while it was there. And that's, I'm just thinking of liability, that's all.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
I got a question, Mayor. What's the duration that they'll be using ours, our beach sweeper?
I don't know what the exact time, Noel, do you remember what the timeframe was? Was it two years? Was it two years? It's a two-year period.
It's a two-year period.
Yes.
And then they're bigger doing it, when will we begin this? When will we be beginning doing their harbor?
Well, next year, I think, we're going to start, once this is done. And it's a small, it's a very small beach. It's not a big beach. Okay, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Our next item, approval of Halloween Trick or Treat hours on October 30, 2016, from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Newsome. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item F, motion to authorize a proper city official to execute a professional service agreement by and between Delta Institute and LA, not, a non-for-profit corporation, and the city of Waukegan pertaining to Delta Institute and independent contract to serve as a neutral third-party facilitator, coordinator, and communicator of the Waukegan Lakefront Working Group, WWWG, for a two-year period. Funding shall come from a grant to obtain from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. The agreement is continued upon receiving said grant. We applied for a grant, and it's no cost to the city. It's not a matching grant. The Illinois Department of Natural Resources will pay this full amount for this person to help us get our lakefront developed and make sure we're following the criteria of the IDNR, the EPA, and all those other agencies. Any questions on this?
Mayor?
Yes.
One, why do we not just hold off on this until we get the grant? Since we just received the contract today at 9:25, as opposed to last Friday, I'm a little, I'd like to kind of look into this a little bit more.
Noel, you want to step to the mic? Noel can answer that question.
Delta Institute has expressed their desire to start working with us ahead of the grant, taking the risk that the grant doesn't happen, though IDNR approached us about providing the grant funding, and they brought Delta to the table with us. So, it's very likely that we're going to get the grant. It would be very unlikely that we wouldn't. Delta would like to engage with us prior to the grant being approved at no additional cost to us or to IDNR. They would then join us for a next meeting, which is next week, the Waterfront Working Group. So, they'd like, they'd like to start right away, and that's why we were looking at the agreement at this time.
Okay, and so it just terminates if we don't get the grant?
If we don't get the grant, then they would just stop meeting with us, and the time that they spent would have been pro bono.
Yeah, and no cost. Alderman May?
So, just to be clear to the council, this is a completely different scope of work than when we hired Gary Deegan as our lakefront coordinator under a separate grant, which you talked about had to do with development and coordinating grants. So, this is a little bit different. I know that I sit on the committee, so I have a little bit more knowledge, but I'm just saying, maybe it's important to differentiate what these two different consultants are doing for us. Do you see what I'm saying?
They work together?
I do. This particular one, Delta Institute, will facilitate the Waterfront Working Group, which is a group that includes Alderman May, it includes the mayor, several staff people, the Port District, the Park District, the State of Illinois Coastal Management Program Director is on the group with us. And that's who brought the money to the table, the funding, and brought Delta Institute to the table. So they will facilitate those meetings. They'll prepare agendas and direction. They'll help us coordinate and keep track of all of the different projects that are going on on the lakefront, including the grants, and making sure that everything is on track and that everybody understands which grants are open at any given time. They'll also help us seek other funding. They'll seek partnerships with other agencies. The agencies we're already working with try to find areas that we can leverage each other's resources and benefit. For example, the Park District and the city together, where there are opportunities to apply for grants in partnership or help each other through work for and with each other. They'll also meet with other groups, seeking funding and seeking resources for us. They'll try to keep track of what the Park District's doing related to the lakefront, what the Port District is doing related to the lakefront. Opportunities that may come up through other funding sources, whether they be state, local, foundation sources or something we haven't really been able to access very well. And they, as a nonprofit, have access to those resources much more readily than we do, so they can seek those sources out for financing for us. Alderman May, did that cover what you wanted me to address?
Okay, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Belko.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Ordinance and resolutions. Item A, ordinance authorizing a proper city official to adopt an ordinance modifying Chapter 3, Section 3-44, limiting the maximum number of Class EEB liquor licenses to five. The reason it's five, when I met with Mr. Torres from the Collector's Office, we learned that Aldi already had a request for a liquor license on their North Lewis store, and the next license for the one at Fountain Square was added, so that makes it five. Any questions on this?
Yes, Your Honor. It was very clear that the Aldi on Lewis Avenue was not going to get one. You made it clear.
Sir, I didn't realize that it was on the list.
Well, it's a whole lot of people been on the waiting list. There's a whole lot of folks, small convenience stores, been on the waiting list for liquor license. So let that Aldi's on Lewis Avenue sit on the waiting list like everybody else. Plus, it doesn't even meet the requirements per you. You said it must be 35,000 square feet, George? Twenty-eight thousand.
No, what is that, liquor license? Category, it's like 13,000, 29,000 square feet, and Aldi on Lewis does meet that criteria.
Barely meets that criteria. Barely meets. No, that, Your Honor, they need to sit on the back burner, just like Walgreens did, CVS did, the small convenience stores have done. There's a whole lot of people sitting out there waiting for these liquor licenses.
The Aldi store on North Lewis has been on the waiting list, and I think each one of you have that list in front of you. I emailed to you, it was a month ago, a few months ago. I can't remember the.
Can you speak on the mic, please? Thank you. No.
Here we go with the liquor license.
Yes, the Aldi on North Lewis has been on the list, I believe, over a year, if I remember correctly. I did email each one of you a copy of that waiting list, and so they've been on there for a while.
Okay. How many people on your waiting list have been over there over a year, George?
Oh, my God, quite a bit.
And I'm sorry, I say George respectfully, Mr. Torres.
On that classification, only those four. On different classification, over, since I took over, two and a half years ago, because there had never been a list before.
Okay, so we have two and a half years for those who've been waiting, and that's what you know. I can tell you right now, there's some that have been on four or five years. Let that Aldi sit in the cut, just like everyone else, and when the time comes up and we have them, we'll give it to them. That Aldi, that store barely, I can tell you barely meets the requirement of what the intent of the original four was all about. I'm not a fan of it. I didn't vote for it, and I don't believe, but I knew, I knew from the bottom of my heart, there's no way one Aldi's was going to get a liquor license and the other one wasn't. It just doesn't make sense. So with that being said, Your Honor, I'm going to hold this over. I think I need to think about it a little bit, and I think the rest of the Aldermen. It doesn't, it doesn't take away from the four existing licenses that are already out there, it's just this one right here. And plus, I want to, I would like to find out how many other all liquor license that people have been waiting on. It's not fair. It's not fair to those who need this, who need these liquor licenses to make money, for the funding of their business. I can remember on Sunset Avenue, it's just east of Northern, there's a small grocery store, when we put the convenience, he had been there over six years, six years. Because Aldi comes up, they're the big store, their sales will not change because of this particular liquor license. Let them sit there. Let them feel the pain that other small businesses in our community has felt for many years. It's just wrong. It's wrong to just give them this license because they're Aldis. And when they've been very productive and successful, minus it. I'm moving to hold this over, Your Honor.
Okay, held over. Next is item B, resolution adopt authorizing a proper city official to approve payment plan by and between the Illinois Department of Transportation and the City of Waukegan relevant to the Sheridan Road project in the amount of $1,601,517.12 in three equal payments as followed. $353,833.39 honored before October 1, 2016. $353,833.19 honored before June 1, 2017, and the final payment on, of $353,833.39 honored before June 1, 2018. Motion by Alderman Belko, second by Alderman Villalobos. Any questions on this?
Yes, sir. Your Honor, I've had a long time to really think about this whole ordeal since it's been brought to our attention. And as I stated earlier, obviously, there are some personnel issues that you're going to have to resolve, and that's legislative, I'm sorry, administratively, I think you will handle that. However, looking at this particular invoice, the size of it, whether we break it up into three payments or two payments, we are going to have to revise the appropriation ordinance in order to pay, if it's three times, one time, et cetera. As alluded to earlier, when it was brought out to the Aldermen and yourself, there were several Aldermen who said if this bill would have been presented to them at the time that the BRP was coming up for demolition, they would, possibly would not have voted for it. And I believed them. Now that we are here at this critical time, as to what to do with this situation, I called several administrators, got their opinion, inside and outside the county, the City of Waukegan, and there were two options that came up. Option number one was to talk to or negotiate with Lake County Grady to end this particular contract as it stands right now and make sure they receive reasonable amount of profit as it stands today with the time they have in it. Or renegotiate with them to hold off on this demolition until our next budgeting season, where we can review, analyze, and come up with a reasonable way to pay off these bills, first, and demolition, second. And that's why I'm making a motion tonight to either, to put those two options into play.
Let me tell them it's out of order.
As it stands. One, terminate the demolition of the BRP property. Two, renegotiate with Lake County Grady to see if we can hold off and continue this at a later date and time. I know it was said that we've signed a contract. We have a binding contract. Binding contracts sometimes can be broken considering if there's not payment. We're in a pretty tough situation. We got to make some tough decisions. It has already been said that if they would have known, legislative body would have known about this bill and maybe potentially other bills, that their decision would have been different. Now that we know, now we have to make a different decision, and that decision simply means we cannot, no longer move forward with demolishing of some property that we do not have the funds to pay for, particularly when we have outstanding bills to be paid. The funding is just not there this year. I'm going, I'm putting that motion on the floor, and I'm looking to get a second.
Alderman, that motion is out of order for two reasons. First of all, it's not on the agenda.
Doesn't have.
Secondly, Section 2-74 of our local ordinance, reconsideration of motion, it states, "No question has been once decided and reconsidered and decided a second time shall not be reconsidered."
Well, Your Honor, I'm bringing up a brand-new motion. With a brand-new motion, it has nothing to do with it. I'm not talking about that particular motion that was brought before us. This is a brand-new motion with a brand-new option, and if it gets a second, we can discuss it on the floor.
Do you want to address that?
And as far as being on the agenda, we amend, we amend bills, we amend different things on the agenda all the time.
Alderman, with all due respect, you cannot bring up a motion on any item that's not formally on the agenda. That's why we have to publish it 48 hours before a meeting. We cannot change it. We can delete, but we cannot add to. And secondly, your ordinance does state, anything that's been considered and brought back and reconsidered and voted on cannot be reconsidered. Basically, what you're doing is you're making a motion to rescind the authority to transact and contract to do the demolition. And in my opinion legally, that's the same motion, it cannot be reconsidered.
Well, let me step back, because Steve, you wasn't here, so, and only Larry Tempest and myself, I think, were the only ones here, when we had the same situation with the Genesee Theater. Some of you might not, probably forgot about it, but I didn't. And I'm going to tell you why I didn't forget, because that was one of the first actions as a young Alderman for the City of Waukegan. There was a revision, not a revision, but a revised budget that needed to come up regarding the Genesee Theater. That wasn't on the agenda at that time. We talked about it, and we passed it. We cannot move forward with paying something that we don't have the funds for. We should not. We must make a decision regarding a $1.2 million demolition project that we've already taken from the rainy day fund with. Now we have to, if, and we heard it clearly, if Alderman would have been aware of this bill, they would not have voted for this project. Now that we are aware, we need to come back and rethink. That's proper government. And I don't think there isn't a legislator up here who does not think the same way I do. And it's wrong. We did not have $500,000 on top of, the $1.5 was already budgeted for the demolition project. We found the money. But we found it in a fund that should, that we should not have taken those funds out of. This is a major hit to our budget. $300,000, as it is laid out here, that's a major hit to our budget. We're not Coca-Cola or Pepsi. We can't generate a product and increase the cost of Pepsi in order to get more funds. We have to go up on taxes. And that is something that I've heard not only the mayor say, I think the Alderman repeated that, and the sentiment from the constituents in our community does not want. So if we're not going to do those two things to generate more premium, I'm sorry, I have my insurance voice on, to generate more tax dollars in order to operate our community, then we must cut somewhere. And cutting somewhere simply means in cutting in a project that is not going to generate us any money, that's not going to have any potential of coming back to the city from a revenue generator for the next five to 10 years. I think we can wait on that. I believe we can wait on that.
That's right.
And that's, that's just sound business sense. We must stop this project and paying these people that we don't have. You're asking us to, once we do this resolution, that's a binding agreement from the City of Waukegan, that we're going to pay you. No ifs, ands, and buts. We got to pay them. Let's take it away from a project that's doing nothing for us right now, nothing. It's a feel-good project for us, and I wish we could do it. Unfortunately, we can't. So we have to make that decision right now.
Mayor, I'd like to say something.
Go ahead.
I'm in agreement with Alderman Cunningham. I think we should revisit what we're doing with our contract. If possible, I'd like to hold this over to see what our options are.
All right. Just wait. Well, the resolution, the ordinance, what we're voting on right now is a resolution. We're not voting on the demolition or lack thereof of BRP. The vote, the vote is on this resolution.
Okay.
It's not on stopping, stopping the demolition of BRP in the interim. And we get confused here. The topic at hand is item B on the ordinance and resolutions. That's what the vote is for. Not for demolition or lack of demolition. So I call for the question. Go ahead, Alderman Tempest.
I'm no concerned too about the demolition of the building, the funds, where's it coming from? Who's going to pay for it? Where's the money coming from? I think the demolition of the building has sat there for how many years? It sits there a few more years so we can figure out what we're going to do or who's going to come in. Do we have a tenant for that land? Do we have a tenant? No. We're getting it ready. Well, you can board it up and be ready for when someone wants to come in and knock it down and build on it. Why am I putting all of the city's money all up front for this property? I'm a little confused. Was shovel-ready? Well, it's shovel-ready with the building there, just got to knock it down first, and the property is there. It's ready, but why are we getting the property ready with no prospect in mind? Nobody with a payment book to pay for it. This is what concerns me. That building sat there for a long time. I hate to put that kind of money out there right now. With the conditions that we are, we sure have some infrastructure that needs more improvement than knocking down that building at this point. That's my point of view at this moment. Yes, it needs to be done, but, you know, it's been sitting there for how many years?
I understand that, Alderman. Then again, the issue is not that. The issue is strictly item B on your agenda.
Review that, please.
Item B is basically three payments of $353,833.39. Over a three-year period to pay for the Sheridan Road project. We got the bill after a six-year delay.
Well, Your Honor, if I may, if I may. then, if I may, Your Honor, as opposed to spreading this out over three years, why don't we just pay the four million with the money that was gonna be used for the B R P demolition? Because we're spreading out the pain for the funding. But we're using, we already have funding that it is clear now, it is very clear that the legislative body is, is looking at not paying to demolish a building, but paying to pay off a bill. So that bill is now behind us. So I move to revise this resolution. Not into three payments, but into one payment. Then we can put on the agenda of how we're gonna handle the B R P property in the future.
The B R P site property cannot be reconsidered.
No, Your Honor, this body, if this body choose and pass on the council floor to stop demolition, then it's stopped. That's the legislative body speaking.
Steve, would you please address that?
No, he don't have to address that. When the Alderman says, "Stop the demolition, stop this," the Alderman wins. Take it to court. We've been to court before.
You want me to say something, Mayor, and it?
And yes, Alderman Valco?
Yes, sir. Alderman, with respect, that, that's the wrong mentality, sir. You can't have, "Take us to, we'll take you to court." That's it. Here's, here's the issues that are at hand. The B R P was voted down the first, the demolition, demolition, excuse me. Then it was revisited. Once it's revisited a second time, you cannot revisit it again. I'm telling you, you can't.
Show me the statue.
I'm sorry, sir, what?
I, I need to see this statue. I've been up here eighteen years, Bill.
Two seventy-four.
Mayor?
Pass that down to him.
Pass it down.
Here's the, here's the second thing. If I had a bill for a thousand dollars and somebody offered me three payments to pay three hundred and thirty dollars apiece at no interest, why would I pay the thousand dollars all at once? It's like going into Greg's TV appliance, Grand Appliance, and they offer you free interest for twelve months. Why would you pay two thousand dollars upfront for a TV set when you can spread it out over a year? And that's what the state is doing here. And that's all we're voting on here. If you, if this body decides to stop the demolition, break a contract, take the city back to court, that's up to you. I will not vote for that. I'm not going back to court to break a contract. What this is, what this is saying here is just that we're gonna pay it in three installments. If you wanna come back later and say, "Stop it," that's fine. But there's no way that I would pay a million dollars and when I have the option of paying three hundred and thirty-three thousand, interest-free. If you wanna stop the demolition, get sued, that's not my vote that's gonna be, but that's fine. But why would you take the million or eight hundred thousand or six hundred thousand that you're gonna save and then pay off the bill? When they're giving you a payment plan, interest-free. And that's all we're voting on here right now. And you can't make a motion to do something if it's not on the agenda. We all know that, sir.
Bill, we can revise any motion on the agenda.
You can make an amendment, absolutely.
Revise amendment, okay.
Absolutely.
Right.
But it's a resolution on a payment plan. What are you gonna revise?
We?
Stop the building? Stop, or, excuse me, I apologize, stop the demolition?
Yes.
And then, you can't, that's a separate issue and it's already been revisited.
Okay.
You can't do it.
No, I, I, well, I, I'm going to get another opinion regarding that. After eighteen years of being on Waukegan City Council, I know, I've seen it before. But as it stands tonight, as it stands tonight, I'm sending, I'm asking for an amendment to this resolution to pay the entire million dollars. Then that puts pressure on us to find a way to stop the B R P from being demolished and use that money to pay off our bill. And now that's behind us. We're, we're gonna give three hundred thousand dollars, so, let me, I'm gonna take everybody all the way back. First, one point five million was the estimate for the building, then it came up to two million. It was kinda controversial. It passed, five to four. Next, we have the, the bill of a million dollars. We don't know where we're gonna get it from. We, we, I'm just talking about from, this is from a legis, now we have a million-dollar invoice that needs to be, that should be paid right away. But, and all due respects, we're gonna hold it off for three payments. Good, sound judgment, and I agree with you. But we have roughly a million dollars already in a kitty that we can utilize to pay that. That's, that's all I'm saying. It's, you know, we, we have to do so many different things with the state of Illinois. And in good faith, paying this million-dollar invoice, I think, would be best. And on top of that, it will stop this B R P. The more I think about it, the more I, I look at this, demolishing this building is a major mistake for us to do right now. It is similar to the additional ten million dollars of the Genesee Theater. And that pains us every time we speak of it. That's my amendment. That's my motion on the floor. If it doesn't get a second, it doesn't get a second, but I believe that this is the best way for us to go at this time.
Repeat your motion, please.
The motion is to amend the three-payment plan and pay the entire invoice, whatever that invoice is, one million, six, sixty-one, one million, sixty-one thousand, five hundred dollars and seventeen cents, as opposed to the three separate payments. By what dates?
We have to put a date in the, in the motion.
Before the, before the year is out.
Well, this is due by October.
We owe, we owe money by October first.
By October first. We have the money, we just have to find a way of how to get out of paying that one in order to pay this one. The money is there. That's not the issue about the money. It's coming from the rainy day fund. Do we all agree? That's where the demolition money is coming from right now, the rainy day fund. We're gonna now take that, that money that would have been used to pay this invoice. We just have to find a way how to stop the demolition. That's where, that's gonna be the issue for us to find out and for our corporation council to, to venture off into. But that's my, that's my amendment. Is there a second?
Mayor, discussion, please.
Go ahead, Alderman Valco.
I'd like the finance director to answer that question. It's that statement, excuse me, is if the one million is still in there. If we haven't used that money already to pay for the portion of the demolition, it would be null and void if we've only got four hundred thousand left.
We have three hundred and twenty-one, I think.
Ma'am?
Tina, can you step to the mic, please?
The stabilization fund. Do we have enough to cover the statement?
No.
That we have the million in there right now?
No.
We have three hundred and twenty-one thousand.
Tina?
Okay.
The money for the B R P project was already transferred out of the stabilization fund to the capital improvement fund. I'm not sure, right as I stand here, what the progress payments have been to Lake County Grading. Maybe Mr. Haggerty can answer that question. He would process those invoices.
Okay. Mr. Haggerty, you wanna step up, sir, if you know? Are we well short of the one million? This, this discussion is, is useless, then.
Currently, there's only been three hundred and sixty.
Doctor the mic, please.
Currently, there's been three hundred and sixty or three hundred and eighty thousand dollars invoiced to date on the, on the B R P project.
And is that to Lake County Grading or is that to Gary Deegan?
Lake County Grading.
Okay, who's actually paying, are we paying Lake County Grading or are we paying Gary Deegan to pay Lake County Grading?
No, we're paying Lake County Grading.
So which leaves us what?
One point four.
Six hundred, six hundred fifty, seven hundred at the most?
No.
To, to, for, for the total contract?
Correct.
We have just
It's a two-million-dollar contract.
Just the asbestos, the asbestos removal was substantial, and that's not been invoiced yet.
A small portion of it has been.
Okay, so, there's more invoices?
Total on the, total on the entire project is, call it four hundred thousand dollars right now.
Which brings me to a question, Mr. Haggerty, is I thought when we initially went into this contract that we were only paying Mr. Deegan for the environmental services on the asbestos.
That's correct.
Well, then why is it through the contract that it's fifteen hundred dollars a week that he gets?
That's part of the, part of the contract. He's overseeing the asbestos abatement, making sure that everything is going to the proper places. He's on-site supervision of the asbestos crews, making sure that everything we've done is safe and within the law.
So how many weeks is that process, or is that an open-ended contract?
No, it's not an open-ended contract. It's an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand dollars. So at fifteen hundred, four months is what the original contract was supposed to be.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Can I ask a question? I thought the asbestos portion of the project was already completed. Early on.
The survey was, yes, to identify what was asbestos and what wasn't. Now this is to make sure that it's all being taken out, it's all being taken out safely, it's all going to the proper landfills. It's, there's no safety violations and to do the clean, clean air sampling.
So fifteen hundred dollars a week is a substantial amount of money. I think all of us could agree, so is that, is there like, someone from Deegan Associates is down there full-time?
Not full-time, they're down there, I'm gonna say, close to twenty hours a week.
And did we bid that process?
No, it's part of the contract.
What do you mean, part of the contract? Like, aren't we required to have bidding on that? Why would it all?
No, it was, it was a it was set, it was set into the contract.
By who?
It was a lump sum, or it was, it was an amount put into the contract.
I guess what I'm asking, Mr. Haggerty, is by who? Was that by you? Was that by?
It was by me.
Okay, and did you bid that out to other people for asbestos removal?
No, I did not.
Isn't that part of the process?
As part, we're not, we're paying, we're paying for it through, well, the, the grading, yes.
Tom, that was bid out. Asbestos removal was bid out.
Yes, it was bid out, yes.
That's what she's asking.
Mayor, I think we're getting way off track.
We're, we're way off the agenda here.
Yeah, 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 I, I think, I think, I think Mr. Haggerty, I think Mr. Haggerty has answered the question of Alderman Valco's concern and it came out, how much money has already been, how, how much money or the amount of funds has already been expended on the existing demolition process? And I, I thought I heard up to the sums of four hundred thousand. With that being said, the total budget was two million. Now that's about one point six million dollars left. My calculation's saying that that's still a million dollars we can take here, the, the state of Illinois bill, and still have a six hundred thousand dollars to kinda move forward slowly in, in, in the demolition process. Again, we should not be, and, and, and I, and I wanna be very upfront and transparent, I was not in favor of this particular project. I was not. I don't think we need to be demolishing a building that we don't have money for, but it moved on. That's the process that we have in the city of Waukegan. So now with that being said, things have arrived. So we need to change that mindset in order to take care of what's in front of us now. I think to Mr. Alderman Tempest's point, that we don't have anybody in the wings to cut a check to handle some of the costs. We don't have anyone in the wings to even give us what our vision is for that. So why not hold off on that? And I think that we can, considering what's in front of us today. What's in front of us today is a million-dollar invoice to the state of Illinois who we have ongoing relationships with for grants from police to fire to public works, et cetera. Why, why damage those relationships, considering the temperament in the state of Illinois, when we can just pay that off? Using monies that would have been levied for something else that we don't have any use for at this point in time? That's all I'm asking.
Alderman?
Yes, ma'am.
Chairman?
Yes.
Alderman, you, you know that I am firmly, I was firmly against the demolition project that is well underway. But I, I, I caution the action that you're suggesting because I don't know if you've been down there, but the state of this building right now, I don't know that we'd wanna walk away right at this minute, 'cause if you go down there and take a look, there's, it's a mess. It's half demolished, it's open. It wasn't dangerous before we started demolishing it, but it's dangerous now. I'm concerned about the current state of the structure. I'm concerned about the fact that we do have people that break into it, judging by the vandalism on the water tower. And I'm concerned about our legal position. So I, I just, I, I, I have a bad taste in my mouth about this demolition, worse than anyone up here, I'm sure. But I just caution what you're suggesting. I, I haven't, you know, I haven't thought that through. You and I have never discussed it. I just, because of the reasons I'm stating. That's all I know.
And understand, Alderman, there's no guarantee that what you're suggesting will work. I spent, I've been mayor three and a half years. For three and a half years, I've been in court almost constantly on issues that were twenty-three to twenty-four years old. We lost every one of them. And this one is a no-brainer. If we, if they take us to court, we will lose this. We'll end up paying their fees, we'll end up paying for the demolition at some point in the future. And I would suggest that you rethink your, your concept because I, I don't think it's a valid way to address this. And also, you may force me to bond this because we don't have the money if we can't do what you suggested. And I'm, I, after talking to corporation council at length about this, I don't see how we can do this legally and not come out with the wrong end of the stick.
I respectfully disagree with that concept. Lake County Grading has been doing work for the city of Waukegan my entire eighteen years as an Alderman. The relationships that have been formed with them and us and the things that we have on the docket for the next twenty to thirty years, I don't think they're gonna jeopardize that. That's me personally speaking.
Alderman, they sued us twice, twice and won both times.
That further lets me know we probably shouldn't have been doing anything with them in the first place. If they suing us.
Why do we do business loan again?
Okay, the motion made by Alderman Cunningham is to amend the current motion to make a one pay, one, one-time payment in the amount of one million, six, sixty-one thousand, five hundred dollars and seventeen cents. Is there a second? Paid for by October first. By October first. That gives us thirty days to get a million-plus dollars. Is there a second to the motion? Is there a second? If not, motion dies for a lack of a second. Roll call on the original motion, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest? Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham? Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, Madam Clerk, audience time.
Les Duffner?
Good evening. Thank you, City Council. Thank you, Ma'am, Mr. Mayor. I am a resident of Waukegan. My name's Les Duffner. I'm a six-year Navy veteran, settled here after my time in service in nineteen ninety-eight. I've been a homeowner for about six years now. I'm in the third ward, Greg Malisios Ward, and I wanna say that I don't, I'm not a business leader, don't own anything other than my home. And I've just started wanting to get involved and kinda see what's going on. I, I've been coming here for the past year, off and on. And I believe that every single person who sits here on this council cares deeply about this city. And Alderman Cunningham, and while I agree, and I, I understand your point, I'm, I'm in agreement that, that downtown area needs to get developed. You know, that needs to be graded, that building removed, 'cause it'll be very attractive. But that's not the reason why I wanted to come up here. I just simply wanted to mention that I'm a part of the Gurnee American Legion. And on September seventeenth, there's gonna be a craft beer festival. And there's gonna be over fifty local and regional beer providers and manufacturers. And it's to raise money for the Gurnee American Legion and also Lake County Honor Flight. And also, present there will be She cares very deeply about Veterans Closets, as do I. I'm third-generation Navy. I've got over 20 members of my family who've served in all four branches, or, excuse me, all five branches of the armed services. So, I care very deeply about it. So, if you're interested and you want to know a little bit more, and it's coming up again on September 17th, live music, food trucks, if you want to learn a little bit more about it, I'm sorry, kids, no one under 21 allowed. But for the rest of us, it'll be a nice opportunity just to kind of get out and enjoy the last bit of summer. So, thank you.
Thank you. Melissa, Melissa Hahn.
Maria?
Yes.
I'm sorry. One of the things that I looked at, that we never approve block parties before we, like, it's not on there, but we do have block parties coming up. Should we make a motion for that?
Not on the agenda.
So, we can still submit them, though?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can still submit them.
Okay.
Hi there. My name's Melissa Hahn. I live right here at 508 West Madison. I've got a little bit of paperwork I'd just like to pass out.
Baby, hold on.
Okay. So, basically, I'm up here because I'm concerned with two circuses that we've allowed here in Waukegan this year. We've had Carson &amp; Barnes and Kelly Miller. Spoke with Pat a little bit, and investigated, investigated a little further myself, and realized that here in Waukegan, it's against city ordinance to even allow any type of wild animals here. So, the first page I gave you just kind of explains, I highlighted, any persons, individual, firm, corporation, partnerships, businesses, which the circus would fall under, as well as the wild animals, which if you don't understand what a wild animal is, that's highlighted there. So, with, in Section 4.2, keeping livestock and follow wild animals is prohibited. It clearly states in letter A that this is really not allowed here in the city of Waukegan. And I kind of brought this attention to the local animal shelter, as well as the local veterinary clinics. And when I've reached out for help with them, they've explained to me that they have no authority or any type of grounds to kind of step in. But in fact, they actually do. If you look at, if you check out letter D, you will see that they do have authority to investigate and make sure that these wild animals are being kept properly. But that's not to mention that they're not even allowed here, period. And then, if you follow to the next page, you'll see that we do have a violate, with this violation, it is a civil offense that's punishable up to 750 blocks. So, my question is, and I'm not really touching on, like, the animal cruelty and the, just the more emotional, passionate side of watching these animals and the circumstance that they are in. But I'm, my question is, why are we allowing the city ordinance to be violated?
What's being violated?
The fact that there are no wild animals allowed here in Waukegan. And yet, we've had two circuses here with animals. And I'm all about the circus. You know, they do bring in money. However, there's, there's different types. Gurnee has had two circuses, the Italian Circus, which is a fabulous water show, and then Nitro Circus, which is, which either circus does not involve any animals. But the circus that we've allowed here allows animals, and we have a city ordinance that says not allowed.
My question here is that it says, we don't have cattle, sheep, goat, horses. Of course, we have all those things within the city limits. There's farms out by me. They have all those.
They're grandfathered in?
Um...
No.
They're zoned. They're zoned, yeah.
They're farmed, they're farmed zone, they can't be.
But the other question is, can you tell me where these are happening, where these circuses were?
Yeah, the actually, this circus is actually in the ward for Pat Ziegler.
Your three minutes is up, I'm sorry.
Okay. It's right next to Home Depot off of Belvedere.
Your honor, the...
So, I guess my question's not answered, or is my time limit's?
Well, before you go on... You just make a presentation. We don't, we don't respond to you.
Your honor, a question for you. I, I thought circuses, carnivals, all those come before council for approval. I know they used to, they used to come before us for approval. I'm trying to find out what, where that stopped.
Circuses and...
And carnivals, yes.
Circus is different from a carnival.
It doesn't matter, all those outside.
Yeah. Well, I called, and I, I tried to investigate that myself, and it was just basically a dead end.
George, would you?
Yeah, wait.
If it's on private property, not city property, it does not go to city council. However, if it's use of city property, yes, it will go in front of city council.
No, no, no. I'm, I'm sorry, George, and I don't mean to take this away from you, but I can remember all carnivals, when Kelly Link used to run that, they would always come before us for approval.
Yes, yes.
I distinctly remember that. I don't know, I don't know when it stopped, if it stopped with you or with others, but I remember all carnivals. Matter of fact, there was a gentleman who wanted to do a carnival that we didn't pass on council floor. Troy, Troy Smith. Troy Smith wanted to do a carnival, and we told him no on council floor.
Did he want to do on city property or private property?
No, it was, it was, it was at the Belvedere Mall.
Could we confirm if that, if, could we confirm right now if that property is private or city?
Okay. We're done. Next, next, please.
No. Well, that, that is private, ma'am. Ms. Hahn, that is private.
Charles Pitts.
Steve, can you look into that so we get a better understanding? Because I do remember us approving carnivals, circuses, anything that happened to do with outside events, is what we used to call them. Outside events or special events. That's what they used to call special events, George. They came through before city council for approval. And that gave the Alderman the opportunity to know what was going on in those particular wards. That's the reason I bring that up, George.
Thank you, Steve.
Charles Pitts.
Hello. I guess I'm just, I guess I'm just trying to figure out, maybe someone can help me, just about the basic economic opportunities for your average individual in Waukegan to make a living wage. I'm wondering what type of city-funded training programs for plumbers, carpenters, electricians that you might have within the city limits. I'm also wondering about, sometimes you make announcements after about different events. I'm wondering if you have, like, any type of city newsletter. I've looked online. I'm wondering if all these announcements you make are codified anywhere. I, I will report that the SWAS stickers are still on Glen Rock across from the old bottling company. It seems like it's getting a free pass.
What is that?
I think, now, my other issue is, is this body cam. Everybody's talking how wonderful it is, but the policy and procedure regarding the body cam, it's, it's horrible. It seems like the police can actually take notes from this video and then put it into their incident report. So, they can fabricate the police report, or cover up their lies, or whatever they're doing by watching the video. So, in, in this policy, there is no... I'm talking, I have my three minutes. I can call a state attorney, okay?
Yeah, okay.
You don't abridge me, okay? The other thing is, is there's no consequences in this, this policy. Where's the consequences if these officers don't turn on their cameras? If they, if they break them, if they delete the video, where is the consequences for these, these type of actions? I didn't see it anywhere in the policy. I mean, I'm wondering, did anybody look at this policy before they just started dumping this in the general order? Or what's the, what's the situation here?
It was reviewed by the Department of Justice, the NAACP, the Latino Coalition, our State's Attorney's Office, Citizen for Progress. Yeah, it was, it was, and matter of fact, you probably know more than I do, because I, I've read the thing a dozen times, and you seem to know more than I do about it.
Well, I mean, I mean, I had to do a Freedom of Information Act. How come it's not on, on, how come it's not online with the rest of the general order? I mean, it's like you're gonna hide it from the, hide it from the city?
Chief, Wayne, is, is that, is that been instituted, the policy's instituted, correct, on the body cameras? Yeah, it's, it's online?
It's not online.
Okay, but it's available? Okay.
So, I gotta do it, so the citizens have to do a Freedom of Information Act just to get a copy of the general order?
It'll, it'll be online as soon as, as soon as it's, goes through the Department of Justice for approval and the city council for approval, yes.
So, how many months or years will that take?
Mr. Pitts, your time is up.
Okay.
Is it Aileen Roberts?
Yeah, I'm for you.
Thank you, Mayor Motley, and esteemed council members. I'm Aileen Shanley Roberts. I'm the rector of Christ Episcopal Church. I'm a resident of the 4th Ward and a member of Clean Power Lake County. And all of us are here this evening, in the first two rows there, for a couple of reasons. First, I want to start with the thank yous. I'd like to thank the mayor, Alderman Villalobos and Cunningham, and Madam Clerk LaCorre for their participation in the CPLC beach sweep two weeks ago. Over 100 people cleaned the beach and shared their hopes for a clean energy future for Waukegan. Your presence at the beach sweep was a testimony to your investment in our city. The decision of council tonight to enter into an agreement with the Delta Institute is another example of your commitment to the future of our city and your desire to, to take the necessary steps to begin this process. Thank you for your bold leadership. It's essential. But I'm not just here to thank you for what you're already doing. I'm here to hold you accountable and challenge you to do more. Contracting with the Delta Institute is a great step. But in December of last year, CPLC asked you to assemble a task force to develop a responsible transition plan for the coal plant. Until tonight, we've heard nothing about progress in this effort. Transparency is a key component to effective leadership. The voting public wants to know that you take our priorities seriously. We also want to help you with these priorities so that we all benefit from your success. CPLC brings together a strong constituency that's effective. Thanks to public pressure, NRG is finally making progress on the installation of donated rooftop solar for seven local schools. CPLC played a significant role in making that happen. Working together, we can do even more, but we need to be informed about the process. Redevelopment of our lakefront is a public process. It's one that all of us care very deeply about, and it is one that can no longer wait. It's time for Waukegan to realize its potential. The Delta Institute is only one piece of the puzzle. We still don't know where you are with NRG. They're essential to the conversation, and the city's relationship with the, with them is complicated. NRG sponsors many community events, and it's far too easy to accept short-term, immediate gratification through donations that are small compared to the expense that's required for long-term investment to answer the difficult questions like, when will the plant be retired? How do we achieve just transition for the workforce? Who will plan and fund cleanup of the site? And what happens to the property and the tax base when the plant does retire? These answers have huge implications when we talk about lakefront redevelopment. If NRG is unwilling to collaborate, what are you and city council willing to try to get them to the table? Residents of Waukegan are tired of waiting and wondering.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Fernand Wilson?
like, he's saying that, I mean, we can't go outside and do things in our own yard. I'm afraid to even cross his house, because he comes outside and gets in my face and screams at me. But, I mean, he's saying that he should be, like, a manager of our block, but if you got five people calling the police on him at almost one time, do you think that's not, that, do you think he's fit to be a manager of one of our blocks?
Who, who are we talking about?
We can do it.
Is this Christopher Wilson? Okay.
I want to be something in my life, but I can't, I can't study at night when I'm trying to do something, read and write, and he just makes noise at night, and it's just hard for me to, like, think and do stuff. I don't even go outside, I just want to sit at home and be myself.
Christopher Wilson, senior.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Christopher Lake Wilson, senior. These are my two twin boys. And the reason why we are here is because we have racism on our block. We have a man that comes out, they're coming outside, they can't even ride their bikes down the street without this man coming out calling them N's and calling my wife a B or a H. When we call the police, Officer Fong acts as if I have done something wrong and wants to arrest me. And I am getting fed up. I, we called the police, we went to court, the judge told him not to say nothing to us, we don't say nothing to him, he's already broken that, that, the ordinance that the judge put out. And I'm getting fed up. So, now, I'm coming to the city council, because it seems to me the only way that something is going to be done is either if somebody gets hurt or somebody ends up dead, and it ain't gonna be me. I am a military veteran. I am tired. I have fought for this country so that my children can ride up and down the street without having any problems whatsoever. I could see if they're cussing him out or calling him all types of names and so forth. You ask anybody on the block, they'll tell you my children are well-behaved. They have manners. They do things the right way. They say yes, ma'am, and no, sir. And I'm standing here today, somebody needs to do something. Because my wife has talked to you.
Mayor.
My wife has talked to you. We've talked to our Alderman. We've talked to Mr. Cunningham. We've been to court. We've even tried to reach the chief of police. And like I say, the next time Officer Fong comes out and wants to arrest me for calling the police on somebody that does something illegal, something gotta give.
Wayne? Dana?
Hi. My name is Dana. I have been, having issues with my neighbor since May. I have done everything in my power. I have ignored him. I have notified the police. I have came directly to my mayor's office.
He did.
And I have, like I said, we've been to court, we've tried everything, but constantly having combat with him. I don't know if he has a mental issue or what, but my children are terrified. I'm at my wits' wit it. My husband is ready to take action. Something needs to be done, because, I mean, we're in a nice neighborhood, it doesn't make common sense that you can't go outside. You can't get in your car. You can't have company without a person screaming from their window or standing out in front of your house threatening you, calling you racial slurs. So, my thing is to the point of, can somebody do something before somebody be dead?
Teresa Thomas?
Yes, Teresa needs to talk.
Hi. I'm Teresa Gunn Thomas. I am the aunt of the twins. Their next-door neighbor is a character. I mean, a real cartoon character. I have sat in the driveway, watching the twins, trying to play up and down the street, trying to do neighborly things like cutting grass for the ladies down the street. He runs and he sabotages the things that they're doing, trying to do just little things in the neighborhood. I was sitting in the driveway on August the 22nd, and I pulled out of the driveway and I parked on the streets. I was sitting in the car, in, reading my Bible, minding my own business. He came out of the house, he walked down the street with his dog. I'm sitting in my car, minding my own business. He came back around the corner, ran right into my car. He came back around the corner, ran right into my car, went around my mirror with the dog. If I had to open up my car door, I would have hit him, and it would have been an accident because I didn't see him. He ran up on me. This man is very destructive, and the things that he's doing, they're being covered up by his mother and whoever else. Now, I'm asking the mayor, I'm asking the city, these young men, they have a future. But if we don't do something to stop this man from what he's doing, I'm gonna leave it like this, something needs to be done, and it needs to be done now, because if it was the other way around, it would have been already taken care of.
Good evening, council. My name is Tracy Robertson. I witnessed a conversation with Dana and her neighbor over the phone. She was in her backyard doing some gardening, and I heard someone say, "You black, you so-and-so, I don't know what you're doing over there." And she was like, "What's going on?" And then she, he started just like ranting and raving and hollering and screaming and calling her out of her name, and I was like, "Call the police." And she was like, "Well, I know the neighbor, this is her son, I'm gonna go over and talk to her." You know, I never had, I said, "Have you ever had any problems with her?" She said, "No, never had any problems with her," so she figured she can go over. She was knocking on the door, and as she was knocking on the door, he told her to get away from his door, and he proceeded again, calling her black so-and-so. I was very fearful for her. I did not go over there because my husband is a command master chief in the Navy. I don't, I try to avoid conversation. This is my dear friend, I've been knowing her for years. I just got back from Hawaii, and I like to spend time with her, but when I go over there, I choose not, I like to get her in and get out, because he comes outside, he has stand outside, and he's very intimidating and it's very scary. So I just think that something needs to be done for someone gets hurt. Thank you.
Mr. Blanks?
Did you get her, her name is on the list also? She's right by Mr.?
Audrey?
No, Sheena. For Sheena, she's next to me.
No, next I have Mr. Blanks, and then Audrey.
No, look right by his name.
By Christopher Wilson, Senior.
Ma'am, just go to the mic. Go to the mic.
Good afternoon, now, we just want to make our neighborhoods a peaceful place for any child to be raised and to have the freedom to go forth. As an adult, we can tolerate a lot of things, if somebody calls you names or does something to you, but a child should not have to go through that at all. And we're asking for your help in this matter. We can stand outside and we're just taking groceries out of our car, and he will stand there at the end of his driveway and just stand there looking at us like, you know, he's ready to do something to us. He has taken jobs from these kids and intimidated people in the neighborhood when they're trying to raise money to help themselves out in school. And he's gone back through and told the neighbors that he would mow their lawns for free just so these kids could not have a job making their own money, to make their own way. And they have the heart to do that, and a lot of kids don't, and he's stopping them. So help us stop him.
Mr. Blanks?
You know, Mayor, the bottom line is, this is the primary reason that my doors are open, because when this family and the families like Ms. Mary Reese come to you and come to this body, and they've done their due diligence, I got police reports here, they got four police reports, they've been over to the county, they've done everything to include talking to their mayor and their alderman, and it never should get this dangerous with these young kids who are very creative, should be living in fear in their own community. So that's a major problem when, I'll tell you this, Mayor, it don't take an advisory board or sensitivity training to return a phone call. And I'm disappointed, I'm really disappointed, but I'm not surprised. I'm not surprised, because I've watched this, I've been at this City Council meeting over a decade, families like this coming to my center all the time, and they are those who may benefit, or few who benefit, having you in office and keeping you in office at the expense of the struggling of the masses of people and those who want clean air. So Mayor, you really, you really gotta do better. I mean, you've got families here who've been coming before, and you know, I'm not gonna lay it all on your lap, because they are those who benefit off keeping you in office. So maybe we need to start to looking at some of them too, who are keeping you in office. Because the bottom line, there are those who would have us to believe that you are truly working in the best interest of all the citizens, and it is apparent that you are not. You're not. You're not. When families can't get a return phone call, and there are those who are willing to tell us, "Oh, this is a good mayor, he's doing the right thing," I don't buy it. Never did, never will, because I've watched too much corruption go on in this city where a million dollar invoice get lost. It's kind of like the $65,000 that you didn't know nothing about that got paid out at the library. So much too often, you act like you don't know what's going on, and this family had came to you time and time again, there's no way you can keep a known situation and expect to continue to be the leader of this city that you're supposed to do. This is your job, to protect the best interests of these families and these children. If you can't protect the children, and you don't want to do that, how the hell do we figure you're supposed to protect the best interests of the finances and everything that's supposed to go on in this city? You are not doing your job, sir.
Audrey?
Chief Wallace?
Audrey?
Did I not send these people to you? Did you not talk to them after our, after our conversation?
Talking, but ain't nothing accomplished.
Okay, next.
Audrey? There's no Audrey? Margaret Carrasco?
On September 2nd, as a taxpayer for the city of Waukegan, I submitted a letter, a complaint to the U.S. Attorney General requesting for a federal investigation into possible case of fraud, waste, ethics violations, and/or abuse. Specifically, number one, request a federal investigation into the $2 million demolition of the former Bombier Recreational Products, BRP building that was addressed tonight. Number two, request a federal investigations into the recently found $1 million invoice. Number three, request a federal investigation into the city of Waukegan's Mayor Motley and City Attorney Steve Martin, 11-page confidentiality agreement with Vet Fest, with Kevin Fianco, with Chris Silknick. Number four, request a federal investigation into the real estate investment development company, Renegade Real Camp. Number five, request a federal investigation into all documents that have been provided to the city of Waukegan regards to Vet Fest. Number six, request a federal investigation into the basis for our Mayor Motley and our City Attorney, Mr. Steve Martin, to publicly state claim to Waukegan taxpayers and to the aldermen, whether verbally, emails, et cetera, and I quote Mayor, that the Vet Fest had all the licenses, performers, vendors, material equipment, insurance, skills, knowledge, expertise necessary to provide said services, when in fact, Vet Fest, according to the state of Illinois, did not even exist. Number eight, request a federal investigation, city of Waukegan's Rainy Day Fund. Okay, I got two shovels now to dig it all out. Number nine, which I'm adding on, a federal investigation to Deegan and Associates and their $1,500 now being paid weekly. And just in closing, in light of all the different issues and more issues that were presented tonight, you know, maybe we need to clean out every single desk here at City Hall and see what other surprises we find. Thank you.
Kai Mclemore?
I ain't got no voice. You know, Black Lives Matter had a forum at the Waukegan Library last month, and want to thank aldermen David Geroa and Chief Police and the Officer Rick Harris who showed up. And it was a very diverse forum and very informational, talking about racism. I was really shocked that I didn't see some of you, the aldermen's up in here. Don't even worry about the mayor. But if you notice, I put one on your desk, which is a Black, Black Lives Matter present, blue, black, and brown, a community discussion on how to improve relationship between police and communities and colors. This will be Thursday, September 15th, between 6:00 and 7:30 at the Warren Township, Warren Newport Public Library, 224 North Oak Plain Road in Garnet. You know, we be moving this forum around. I ain't got no voice, so I just want to read something a little bit about Black Lives Matter. "To justify slavery, we whites portray blacks as subhuman, primitive, stupid, and servile. To justify segregation, we whites portray blacks as moral concept, ignorant, predatory, and sinful. After civil rights, we whites portray blacks, portray blacks as evil, drug addicts, gang bangers, and welfare queens." There has been a point in our history, when, there's never been a point in our history when we as whites have sympathetically institutional value of black lives as we do our own. That's why Black Lives Matter. I ask y'all to come out to hear this forum. It's very diverse and is open to the public. Anybody like to come, like a flyer, I got some. Thank you.
Del Peterson?
I'd like to start out saying to the family that was in here, but I see they all took off that, it was a good thing them coming here, because it said silence is a nod of approval when there's a problem when you don't say anything. And I would also like to say that I wish other families would follow suit when there's problems and they feel they're treated unjust to come up here and present it, so then that way we'll know. But I also want to say that this gives me the opportunity to sit down with the mayor and with the chief of police and dialogue and come into some type of solution with the problem that they're having. And I'm not glad that they went through it, but I'm glad that the opportunity is here for myself and some others to get involved, because I've kind of changed my tune lately, because I've been involved with some things with the city of Waukegan and the mayor and other people. And the problem that they're having, there's a solution, and it's right at our fingertips. They did right. They brought it here, we're aware of it, and I'm confident we will handle it. You know what I'm saying? Now, I would like to say it was great seeing in the newspaper, the article on the police and the body cameras. That was really great. And I really feel, myself and many others, that it was a big step towards bridging the gap between the police and the community. And I'd like to say thank you, Mayor. And the reason why I say thank you is because you took it upon yourself to implement the body cameras and also to invite the DOJ in here and give them full rein. See, I'm privy to this knowledge now, you know, and I'm not gonna keep looking back. I see a brighter future and it's here, but if we keep going back, we're not going any damn where. And if I see that we're stagnated and we standing still, then I too will become hostile again. But I do see progress, and I protest for progress, and when it's present, I back off. Now, we may not agree on many different things in the future, Mayor, but it's a great comfort knowing that the door is open where we can sit down and have open and honest, let open and honest dialogue take place. And my closing remark is, I think the city is in a place where it is ready to move forward, full steam ahead, and I am not going to look backwards, because I cannot see where I'm going if I keep doing that. I think we're getting ready to do something. And like I say, I am glad that this problem, I'm not glad that they went through what they went through, but I know we'll straighten it out. Thank you.
Alderman Newsome? Pass. Alderman Tempest? Alderman May?
Thank you. I also want to acknowledge the hard work that was put in by the team at the police department to get the body cameras up and running. This is a great undertaking, and I want to congratulate the mayor and all of the council for unanimously supporting this project. And I want to give a special thanks to Sergeant Dave DeBoffer, who worked really hard with the folks at Motorola in the development and testing of the cameras. His leadership and commitment to the project put us on the cutting edge of this technology, and from what I hear, contributed to substantial cost savings on our contract. So, great job, Waukegan Police. We talk about a lot of different grants up here, grants for roads, grants for bridges, grants for equipment, grants for planning. Last year, you might remember, the Lakefront Active Implementation Grant. I know this group of folks remembers that plan. We had a lot of public meetings. It was a, it was a $60,000 planning grant, and Edgewater Resources at the end of it came and presented us with a plan for how to activate our lakefront. We took that plan seriously. The mayor implemented a lot of new programs this season, which was really great. But in April of 20,000, April 20th of 2015, the City Council also approved a $200,000 grant called the Waukegan Harbor Area of Concern Sustainable Shoreline Grant, which was awarded to Deegan and Associates, and it was managed by our Public Works Director. To this date, or at least not to my knowledge, the City Council has not been presented with this plan. So my request tonight is if the plan is complete, I would love for us to have a presentation of that grant. Moving on, the shared and road invoice. So tonight we approved the payment plan for the mysterious invoice that was received in April and brought to council on August 15th. The cost is real, the cost is valid, I get that, we have to pay it. But the fact that this was concealed from the mayor and city council while we debated for over eight weeks, over $2.5 million expenditure to demolish, make that a $2 million expenditure to demolish a building that presents no imminent danger to society and with no developer engaged on its redevelopment is beyond my comprehension. That's all I'm gonna say about that. Based on this incident, I have lost confidence in the communication that I'm receiving. We have another looming shortfall on the Grand Avenue Bridge Project, and therefore, I'm requesting a full review and update on the motor fuel tax fund and the Grand Avenue Bridge Project at the next Finance Committee meeting, which will be September 19th. Perhaps it can be a joint committee meeting with Public Works so that we can have both directors present for a public discussion. I'll leave that up to you, Mayor. I've seen the capital improvement project details that were submitted during the budget talks back in February, and the costs and revenues on the project were grossly misstated. This council is charged with- This council is charged with the oversight of our constituents' tax dollars. It's imperative that this council clearly understands why 14 Public Works employees were moved to the general fund because of this mistake. That means the general fund must now bear the burden of these salaries and everyone up here understands that we do not have multimillion dollar cushions in our budget or in these funds. We'll receive the updated stabilization rainy day fund report at that meeting as well and we'll see where we stand. So I do like, I would like to make that a public and formal request for the next Finance Committee meeting. Just a couple more comments on the circus. So when you come to city council, you don't necessarily get an answer, so if you stick around for Alderman's time, maybe we'll try to give you answers. Those are, as I said to you, those are approved administratively, it didn't come through council, so your questions can maybe be better answered by staff. Mr. Pitts is, there he is. As far as a city newsletter, I don't think that that exists, but Waukegan Main Street does a great Constant Contact email that you can sign up for and Mr. Cobb is sitting right behind you. They do a great job shooting out information on upcoming events and the city calendar on our website is also pretty well updated, as well as our Facebook page, as far as events in the city. So you might want to check that out. And then my final comment has to do with audience time. And this is going to be the second time I'm making this request in the last three and a half years. I'm looking out at this room, I see kids falling asleep who want to go to church, but parents are trying to do the right thing and expose them to the process. I would like one more time for this council and for this mayor and his administration to consider putting audience time back at the top of the agenda. I feel bad for these people that have to wait. I understand it's educational for them to look at our process and learn our process, but not everyone wants to sit through all of our discussions on whatever may be on our agenda. So I hope that this administration will take a hard look and take, under consideration, moving audience time back to the top of the agenda. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Delco?
Thank you, ma'am. A couple of things. This Saturday, September 10th, is the Northern Illinois Air Show. It's at the airport. It starts at noon, but the doors open at 9:30. It's $15, free parking, military in uniform is free, kids under 12 are free. So it's always a good time, so if you have, you want to go see some good airplanes Saturday, September 10th, starting at noon. The other thing is, a couple of Saturdays ago, I had a business meeting and I was over at Anastasia's Restaurant in Fountain Square and I asked one of the owners, how was his weekend? Because it was, this was like on a Monday. He says, Bill, he says it was one of the best weekends we ever had because of the soccer tournament. I said, oh, Libertyville does pretty good. They come up to the Waukegan Sports Park and they usually sell out. He goes, it wasn't Libertyville this time. So I called the park district and he said it was Naperville. Naperville had another tournament up here and Libertyville, I confused it with Libertyville because the last two or three years Libertyville has come and have been coming up here and having their soccer tournaments up at the sports facility. It was one of the best tournaments they ever had. The owner of Anastasia said it was one of his best weekends they ever had and he heard from the hotels out there that they were booked all weekend. So, most of you know that the park district and the school system is not under the auspice of the city of Waukegan, but when credit is due, credit should be shown. So my hat's off to the Waukegan Park District for one good tournament that they put on this year and hopefully Libertyville will be coming up for theirs also because people come in from Ohio and Pennsylvania for these state tournaments. So, congratulations to the park district and I'll pass the ball to you, ma'am.
Alderman Taylor?
In addition to the air show on September 10th, on 9/11, we have the Remembrance and that will be at 9:00 AM on the Fireman's Park on Dover Road. We also have next weekend, the weekend of the 17th, we have the George Bridges 5K Run Walk. There's also a Coventry Woods Block Party in my ward and also on the 18th is the Lancaster Block Party. A couple of notes that I would like to put out to some of the department heads. I'm severely disappointed in what's happened and the cost to the city. I feel like, as an alderman, I've had information withheld from me. I feel blatantly disrespected. Obviously, the mayor does not feel the same way. I want to say as an alderman, I rely on the information that the department heads give me. It is severely disappointing to me that this kind of behavior is tolerated. I hope that as we go forward, that department heads understand this is not acceptable, at least with me. I hope as we go forward, we build a new relationship based on trust and just as a precaution, I'd advise every department head to go through their drawers this week and make sure there's nothing else that's a surprise for the aldermen. Furthermore, one other thing that I'd like to bring up is, we've talked a lot about diversity training and the need for it, and I definitely agree with that. But one area that we have not addressed is the LBGT community. I think we need to look into this and also address that as part of our diversity training. It's an area that I don't think that any of us have looked at and I would like us to look into that. Mr. Harris, if you could have a conversation with me at some point. Otherwise from that, I hope everyone had a lovely Labor Day weekend and relaxed and enjoyed it.
Alderman Cunningham?
Thank you. One, I want to say to all of the residents in the first ward, this past weekend was, as I drove around and had an opportunity to do block parties, everyone seemed to really enjoy the company. Not a lot of issues going on, thanks to our patrol division. So I'm very, very excited that the southeast side of town enjoyed the company of its neighbors. Tom, before you leave, I do want to say something to you about at the corner of, and I witnessed this, at the corner of Washington and MLK on the northwest corner, I saw a young man pushing a young lady in a wheelchair. And I think they were doing something to the road where anyway that there was a piece that just did not connect all the way. I think we need to go over there and because, and I felt so, so bad and only because of my, and I shouldn't say only because, but it was a little more sensitive to me because my mother-in-law, Veronica Wyker, is in a wheelchair right now. And watching that and the young lady trying to use her leg to get up and then, I don't think it was anybody's fault, it was just as we going through repairing the road and the sidewalk, it just didn't mesh, so I just felt, I wanted to get out, they finally, they got themselves up on that hump, but you can see the frustration on their face. So if we take a look at that, that'd greatly be appreciated. I do want to comment on Clean Air, Power Lake County. I think they made a valid point today, particularly after NRG and through their several meetings have kind of said that coal is very expensive and how to manage that facility is going to be difficult in the future. I do believe that we need to have something in writing from NRG as to where they're going to be at today and tomorrow and how that affects the city of Waukegan. I believe that needs to be there. I think that should be on Russ Tomlin's desk, part of our planning zoning department. And I say that because when the Comwood Edison plant closed in Zion, it took a lot of people by surprise. Financially, it really hurt, I think, this region. And to this day, it's still a recovery there in their recovery mode in the city of Zion and I think throughout the northern part of the state of Illinois. If that did not teach us anything, it taught us that, given what some of the things that they've already said, meaning NRG, and understanding how coal is going to be affected over the next 10 to 15, 20 years, and some of the plans that we have in place for our beach. I really believe that we should have something says, hey, this is where we at, where we might be going, we love to sit down. And obviously, companies, every one to three years, they revisit things. That's just how you do business. So I like for the, I really liked how you guys are really standing on top of that, but more importantly, I think for us, as we disseminate ourselves throughout the community, from alderman to mayor to department heads, I really believe that we should have something in writing as to where they're at and where they're going. That's my personal belief. The issue of this BRP for me, and I'm, now let me step back. The family that was here, I'm going to talk about, I know the last name is Wilson, but for some of us who are from Waukegan, I see Angelo and Ricky, you know, this is the Gunn family, Teresa Gunn, this is who, let me just tell you, this family, the father, labor, the mother, Ms. Gunn, when I was working at the fruit market, I was her watermelon man. She would come and she would give us either a quarter or 50 cents to put her watermelon in the car, just the sweetest lady, and she remembers, remembered me from that time period. And to see Teresa, then that's the youngest daughter, that's her youngest daughter who came here today. This is a long-term Waukegan family that have to endure ignorance. You can call it what you want, that's just plain ignorance. You want to call it mental, fine. You don't have to be mental to say all the things that he's saying to that family. And I really love the fact someone said earlier, to kids, not to black kids, white kids, Latino kids, but to kids, little young men and young ladies who I think are trying to cut grass with somebody down the street to get a dollar fifty cents. That's what we want them to do. And here this idiot, that's what he is, he's an idiot, disrupts another man's home, another woman's home. Now, back in the day, we'd have dealt that a different way. I saw a picture of Mr. Harris, Mr. Tempest, and I affectionately call him Boo Boo, that's not his name, and they had the wrestling approach, you know, like they about to take somebody. Now, back in the day, Ricky's laughing, but he would have been taken down. Crossface, face against the, you know, the mat. But unfortunately, those days are gone. Now, if he was on the basketball court, we might have just dunked on him with a knee in the face. This is, this is unheard of in Waukegan, that this ignorant man, I don't even want to know his race, that's ignorant, for him to speak to this family like that. But I tell you, he got some heat now. If he thought he was getting away with something, he got some heat now. Chief? Stayed by Grand and where is it at? Behind Dunkin' Donuts? Westmoreland? You know, I normally don't say anything about Mr. Fong, but this might be a Mr. Fong project. Last but not least, I want to congratulate Waukegan Township for, I think, another successful 5K run. Is that right? Very successful 5K run. I wasn't able to attend, but I heard about it and again, another, I think that money was raised to help both of their centers to do great things for young men and young ladies who are going through different situations in life. So congratulations to them. God bless.
Alderman Seager?
No comment.
Alderman Villalobos?
Yes, a couple of things. I'll start with the, some upcoming events. We have the Hingston Fieldhouse, sorry, the Hingston, the Waukegan Public Library's Hingston Branch Anniversary on Saturday, September 17th. I don't have a time on that, but that's the date. The Fiesta's Patris Parade is on Sunday, September 18th. And also, we have, there's multiple dates on this, but I only have two off the top of my head. Waukegan Public Schools is doing kind of a community listening session for parents, stakeholders, anyone that wants to come and talk about how they want to envision our school district to move forward. That's being held at 6:00 PM on Thursday, the 15th, and 6:00 PM on Thursday, the 22nd, at Glenn Flora Elementary School and Gymnasium. I want to attend one of those dates. Also, some past events. We had, the Waukegan Public Library had their early learning centers, new exhibit opening. It's called Blast Off. It's a space-themed exhibit for the, for young youth, young children. If you guys haven't seen the library's children's department recently, go take a look at it. There's also an exhibit on the main floor that we've gotten through NASA, so NASA items are at the Waukegan Public Library right now. We also had, the Waukegan Public Library had its appointments, or sorry, elections for the administrative cabinet for the Waukegan Public Library's Board. The Waukegan Public Library's Board President now is Jesus Ruiz. The Vice President is Jackie Herrera-Hirón and I was elected the Treasurer for the Board. So that's an update about the Waukegan Public Library Board right now. Also, a new neighborhood watch was, started up in the fourth ward. This block is inspiring. It is the block of West Clayton between Jackson and Philippa. These individuals met with me, and it was about a dozen initially that met with me and said, we want to start a neighborhood watch. It's a lot of individuals, some elderly there, and a lot of children too, so there's a big age range. And West Clayton into victory, into Philippa, they pulled together about almost 40 individuals for this neighborhood watch. The officers that put, that come and initiate the program for them, so this is probably the one of the best-attended neighborhood watches they've seen across the city. And again, this is, this is what I want to work towards, getting people to involve in our community. This is a prime example of it. Neighborhood watches are a nice way to start that up, to get to meet your neighbors. There was people that lived next to each other for years, didn't know each other, got to meet that night. Phone tree, phone numbers were exchanged, introductions were made. It was, again, inspiring to see that. Next, everybody's talking about the body cameras and I myself am no different right now. I've been subbing at the Waukegan Public, sorry, the Waukegan High School, the Brookside Campus, and I've been doing literature with students, freshman, all freshman courses. And there was an article in the paper about the body cameras and how Waukegan's been one of the first to implement this. So, there is an officer at the school and I invited him to come and speak to the students and explain the process with the body cameras so they're aware of it. Chief, I might throw a little something your way, possible partnership, maybe trying to get some presentations going with the school district about the body cameras for the youth to be informed. I know I add a little extra for that, but I think it'd be a nice partnership. So I think that'd be actually very helpful. Last but not least, my friends, neighbors, fellow volunteers of Clean Power Lake County, thank you so much for being here today. I love to see the support. As you all are aware, or some of you are not, I've been volunteering in Clean Power Lake County for three years. This is something near and dear to my heart, this is something that's near and dear to me and I believe make, could make Waukegan a brighter future. Alderman Cunningham, thank you so much for your comments about the NRG plant. We do need to bring them to the table. We do have an understanding of where they plan on going with our community. We do not want to have history repeat itself, where industry walks away and we're stuck having to pay for remediation over and over again. There's got to be dialogue. Mayor, you're doing a wonderful job with bringing the Delta Institute in. I commend, that's great progress that we're making. But again, this- But again, this is something that I think is very helpful for our community as a whole. So, all you wonderful people, thank you for being here. Thank you for spending the night with us. It's been a long meeting. So with that, thank you so much. Thanks for being here.
I have one thing to announce. We haven't had the Waukegan Beauty Pageant for many years. My daughter, who was Miss Illinois, Miss Waukegan, and Junior Miss Waukegan, has agreed to do it again November 5th. I will get sponsors for that event. The city will not pay for it. We will sponsor it. I will get sponsors to pay for it. It will be held November 5th. The children, the juniors, the miss, and the misses will have their training here at City Hall in this room, and the competition will be held at the Field House, Waukegan Field House. Now, if you have grandchildren or children, or if you're interested in participating, please let me know. We will be sending three Queens throughout Lake County, and the people who are selected as Waukegan Queens will be participating in Lake County Queens events. So it's a great event. I can tell you that my daughter learned so much about poise, character, and commitment through her many years in the pageants, and it's a wonderful thing for children to go through and learn the process of proper conduct, proper speaking, proper, it's just a very good, a very good process for the kids to enjoy. So if you're interested, November 5th, the information will be going out into the school system and be dispersed through the, through the school district. So, motion to adjourn by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Cunningham. All's in favor? Opposed? None, me adjourned. Thank you.
The City of Waukegan is replacing about 20,000 water meters with a new automated meter, which provide for accurate, timely, and reliable reading without having to gain access to customers' properties. The new meters, which will be replaced at no cost to the customers, will be able to identify high water usage and potential leaks. In addition, customers will be able to access their water usage and account information conveniently online. The first thing you need to do is schedule an appointment with Professional Meters, Inc. to have your old meter replaced with a new automated meter reader, AMR for short. Look for a postcard in the mail with the call information or call 866-270-9629. PMI will arrive at your scheduled time to install your meter. They will arrive on a truck or a van with a PMI logo. The PMI installer will have on a shirt or a jacket with a PMI logo and will carry a PMI ID badge. Installers will also wear booties over their work boots to ensure they do not carry dirt, mud, or water into your home or business. The installation process should take less than 30 minutes. The installer will take a photo of the old meter to obtain a record of your final meter reading and the condition of the pipes and fittings. The next step is to turn off your shuttle valves located on your water meter line near the meter. Remove the old meter and install the new AMR meter. The transmitter, which transmits your water usage data to the city, will be placed on a convenient location near the meter. The installer will take a photo of the new meter once it's installed. And that's it. The PMI installer will make sure everything is cleaned up, collect his tools, and head on to the next installation. You may receive a follow-up visit from a PMI manager to ensure your satisfaction with the installation and to make a quality control check of the meter installation. For more information about the Automated Meter Reading Installation Program, please visit If you have any questions regarding the meter installation, contact PMI at 866-270-9629, or the City of Waukegan City Collector at 847-599-2997.